Good evening, everybody. Okay, so, let's just all close our eyes and... As we close our eyes and just breathe, let's just let go of the busyness of this day. Just breathe in God's love and feel God's love, and we just let go of the business of the night. And as we just breathe in God's love, let's just be aware of this moment. To be in the presence and knowing that God is with us. Father, I ask a blessing upon the city of Milton this night, Mayor Lockwood, the city council. I ask that this room be filled with light and your wisdom, so that the decisions made this night, the discussions made this night are for the highest good of all. That this city, Milton, as it unfolds, let it continue to be progressive, awake, and vibrant. Bless this city, Father, Thy will be done, and so it is. Amen.
Thank you very much. Couple minutes, I think, David, what's the official time?
It's, uh, zero one.
Oh, my clock's on, alright. Call the meeting to order. Like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, June 17th, 2013 to order. City Clerk, please make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the June 17th, 2013 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance, please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting would like to provide public comment during the public hearing or during the call for public comment. You're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of the meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, going, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance this evening. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coats?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large?
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Bert Hewitt is excused and not at the meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody here tonight, as well as our staff and our council. The clerk will please sound our first item.
Our next item is approval of the agenda, Agenda Item Number 13-144.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve this agenda submitted by staff.
Second? We have a motion, Councilmember Large, and a second from Councilmember Coats, for approval of the meeting agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Our next item's public comment. I'm gonna guess there's none, any public comment?
No, sir.
Let's move on to the consent agenda, Sooty, if you don't mind reading the consent agenda.
Approval of the June 3rd, 2013 regular city council meeting minutes. This is Agenda Item Number 13-145. Next, approval of the June 10th, 2013 work session meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 13-146. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending May 2013, Agenda Item Number 13-147. Our next item is approval of the following plaits, as I read them in the record. Brayburn, also known as Office Village, final plat revision, add buildings 80 and 90. Charles E. Smith, minor subdivision plat revision, revised property lines. American Family Care, minor subdivision plat revision, revised drainage easement. Kingsley Estates, Phase 1, Unit 2C, final plat, create 11 lots. David Chatham and Rhonda B. Chatham, minor plat revision, combined parcels. Jackson Estates, formerly known as Art Worley Subdivision, final plat revision, revised property line lots 1 and 2. Our final three plat revisions. Deerfield Green 3, final plat revision, revised lot lines 544 through 592 and 592 through 506, revised DE lots 540 through 544, remove BL lots 558, 562, 570, and 574. William Flanagan, minor plat replat, revised property lines. The shops at Winward Village, final plat revision, add tract through E. This is Agenda Item Number 13-148. Our fifth item, approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Strickland Pipeline and Construction, Inc., for miscellaneous bridge repairs, Agenda Item Number 13-149. Our next item is approval of a settlement from consent final order and judgment of the condemnation of 0.411 acres of right-of-way and 0.390 acres of permanent construction and maintenance easement, and 0.015 acres of temporary construction easement at 14000. New Providence Road, from Randy O. Miller, Nancy C. Rolnick, now known as Nancy Feldman, Gary Donner, Sheila Donner, Howard B. Workman, Ronald D. Balzer, H. Stephen Merlin, and Lawton M. Neese III. As trustees of J. Gordon Beckham Jr. Trust, created under trust agreement dated December 16th, 1987, self-realization fellowship and ecclesiastic association of the state of California, Jeff Van Tosh and Arthur E. Ferdinand, as Fulton County Tax Commissioner in the amount of $50,000. Agenda Item Number 13-150. Our final consent item this evening is approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the provision of animal control services between the city of Milton and Fulton County. This is Agenda Item Number 13-151.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Thurman, for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We're gonna move on to our first presentation, because we have no items under reports and presentations, so... The city clerk, please call this.
This item is consideration of HD 13-01, an ordinance for historic designation of the property located at 15690 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia, the Hopewell House. Agenda Item Number 13-152. A joint public hearing was held with the Historic Preservation Commission and City Council on May 20th, 2013.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the reading of the first presentation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous on the first presentation. We don't have any items under the public hearing, so we'll move to our zoning agenda. Our city clerk will please read the rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider rezoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years, immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 13-11, to adopt a new use permit within Article 9, Division 5, Miscellaneous Uses, Section 64-1840, row houses, townhouses. Agenda Item Number 13-135, first presentation was heard at the June 3rd, 2013 regular council meeting, was also discussed at the June 10th, 2013 work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the current Deerfield Highway 9 Form Base Code allows for the development of row houses/townhouses with a use permit within certain transx zones, and that these row houses and townhomes be developed within a mixed-use development. Therefore, language for a new use permit for row houses/townhouses is needed. The proposed use permit meets this requirement. Staff notes that the normal public hearing process is required, and that this is not an administrative use permit. In addition, I want to mention that this proposed language for a use permit does not apply to the Crab Apple Form Base Code, based on the fact that it was determined at the time that that code was passed, that there should be higher density for residential promoted in the Crab Apple area. So I'd like to review with you the proposed language for the establishment of a use permit for row houses/townhomes in the Deerfield Form Base Code area. Section 64-1840, row houses/townhouses, under Section A, row houses/townhouses in the Deerfield Highway 9 Form Base Code overlay district shall only be permitted subject to the issuance of a use permit. Section B, Standards, subsection 1, row houses/townhouses shall not be located adjacent to properties designated T2 as designated on the regulating plan. Subsection 2, the maximum number of attached row house/townhouse units in a building shall be eight. 3, row houses/townhouses in the Deerfield Highway 9 Form Base Code overlay district shall conform to Article 20, Section 4.6.6. B. 4, row houses/townhouses in the Deerfield Highway 9 Form Base Code overlay district shall conform to Article 20, Section 4.16.7. V. 5, row houses/townhouses in the Deerfield Highway 9 Form Base Code overlay district shall conform to Section 20, Section 4.16.8. That is the proposed language to establish a use permit in the Deerfield Route 9 area, along with language establishing the standards for that use permit.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess the only question I had was, in the language, we say they can't be next to Form T2, is that right?
That's sort of, that's comparable to an AG1 type district.
Okay, so, I guess we just didn't, we wouldn't tell them which ones they could be in, because the Form Base Code is T1 through T6, right?
Correct. Well, yeah, I think T2 is the lowest number in the Deerfield.
In the Deerfield area, okay, so the, I, so if there's a T2 involved, if there was a T3 next, if there was a T3 area, there would not be a T3, it'd basically only be a T4, T5, is the way I envision it, is that right?
Uh, no, it could be in a T3. It's only in the T2 that they couldn't be adjacent to.
Okay, so, so if a T3 is next to a T2, they cannot be in the T3?
Ah.
Is that what I'm saying, or am I hearing that right, or am I just thinking?
Well, if there's a T4 next to a T2, then, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, so it's just saying that you want more of a transition from AG1 into a, because this is a mixed-use townhouse development. This is not just townhouses, this is a mixed-use, so it's a little more dense, so they're trying to transition a little more.
Okay, and I just, I was just wondering why we didn't say why not force them to be in a T5 or a T6, or, you know, or something like that, I was just curious.
Yeah.
So, I'm okay with it.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we don't have anybody who's speaking in support or against this, so...
We do not.
I'll close the hearing, and if there's no other questions or comments, I'll open up for a motion. Mayor?
I move to approve RZ 13-11, to adopt a new use permit within Article 9, Division 5, Miscellaneous Uses, Section 64-1840, Row Houses, Townhouses. Agenda Item Number 13-135.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Luss for approval, and a second by Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. If Ms. Field wants to stay there, our city clerk can announce, or call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of RZ 13-12, to amend Chapter 64 zoning ordinance, Article 1 in general, Section 64-1, definitions, as it pertains to row houses/townhouses. Agenda Item Number 13-136, first presentation was at the June 3rd, 2013 regular council meeting, and discussed at the June 10th, 2013 work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Staff has included row house to be synonymous with townhouse, and has therefore amended the definition to be consistent with the existing definition within the Form Base Code definitions. So, under Section 64.1 definitions, under dwelling unit townhouse, we propose the following amended language. A single-family dwelling that shares a party wall with another of the same type and occupies the full frontage line. The term dwelling unit, townhouse, and dwelling unit, and row house are synonymous. That is the proposed language.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy on that? Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Or against?
Or against, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and open to any council discussion, or open up for a motion.
Sir, I'll make a motion to approve the consideration of RZ 13-12, to amend Chapter 64 zoning ordinance, Article 1 in general, Section 64-1, definitions, as it pertains to row houses/townhouses, Agenda Item Number 13-136.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Coats, and I think a second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Move on to our unfinished business, please.
Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages, Section 4168, temporary special event license, pouring permit, to allow during the term of a special event, open container consumption within the fixed boundaries of the physical area where the special event is authorized by licensed premises located entirely within that fixed boundary. Agenda Item Number 13-137, first presentation was heard at the June 3rd, 2013 regular council meeting, and discussed at the June 10th, 2013 work session. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you are some changes to our alcohol beverage ordinance. This was discussed at the work session as something that we are putting together specifically for the Crab Fest that is coming up in October, but it is something that anybody with temporary, that applies for temporary special event permit, will be able to have open containers within that specified boundary. I know there was some question last time about demarcation of the boundary, and if, you know, how we're going to notify people where the boundary is, and we discussed that after the work session, and one of the things that we're gonna do is, was mentioned, was place maps at each location that sells the alcohol beverage licenses, or that sells alcohol beverages, but also place, I think, sandwich boards. We have like 20 sandwich boards located around the event, that says welcome on one side, and see you later, or something like that on the other side, and no alcohol beyond this point. And then, of course, there's gonna be police that meander around the event itself, and volunteers that are gonna be aware of where the boundary is as well.
Great, I can see it now. Our police are gonna be running around having to help these drunks that fall over on those signs.
Can't read a map.
Can't read a map.
Probably happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody any questions on that?
The only thing I ought to remember, there wasn't a term of about 60 days on this?
That was for temporary licenses. I'm not sure why that specific section was included, because we're dealing with just Section 4-168. That was Section 4-167. That is whenever someone comes in and applies for a new license for their establishment, they can get a temporary license for a period of 60 days, not to 60 days. What we're dealing with here is a special event permit, and that is not to exceed 10 days.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And to someone with a temporary license, would they have an effect in this as well? Would they be able to participate in this?
That is a good question. I believe so, if they have a temporary license and they have their state license, I believe they would.
Like if a new restaurant came in and they just happened to, the timing of it was such that?
It would seem as if they had a temporary license, that would be included in it.
Okay. Just to clarify that, it's probably, it's something we can address if that situation comes upon us, but if it doesn't, you know, we're gonna assume that it would be okay, but if that situation came up, I'm sure we could bring it before us to make sure that we didn't exclude a new business.
Yes, thank you.
Ken, I mean, it's obvious you're not Ken, because you don't have a bowtie at all. Any thoughts on that? If we're, if we confirm that, and there's an issue, is that something we can relook at before the time?
It certainly, if, if the code did not provide for that, it would certainly ground 's for denial of the, the special event, temporary special event license, reviewing it, it appears that Stacy's interpretation, just reviewing it for the first time here, appears consistent, that would give them the thought, but yes, you would have the authority to deny it if they didn't, if the code did not provide.
Well, no, I guess I'm looking at the opposite, would we be able to, if it was denied part of the code, could we relook at that on a special basis to allow that? But if you're saying it looks, looks like at first glance that it would be okay?
Right.
But I just want to confirm.
Essentially, it's as long as they comply with the other general ordinances, then they're entitled, they would be entitled to temporary special event license as well, so...
And that's, I think that's the intent, everybody on board with that. All right, any questions for Stacy on that? Then we will, I'll just open up for a motion on that.
Mayor, I move that we approve an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages, Section 4-168, temporary special event license, and pouring permit to allow during the term of the special event, open container consumption within the fixed boundaries of the fiscal area where the special event is authorized by licensed premises located entirely within that fixed boundary. Agenda Item Number 13-137.
Second motion.
Okay, we had a motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Large. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Our city clerk would please sound our next item.
Our next item is consideration of an ordinance of the city council to authorize Fulton County to conduct election. Agenda Item Number 13-138, first presentation at June 3rd, 2013 regular council meeting. Mr. Paul Fricki.
Mr. Mayor, council, before you is a contract with Fulton County to conduct the city's November 5th, 2003 election for mayor and posts one, excuse me, District 1 post one, District 2 post one, and District 3 post one. This has, I believe, been the consistent practice of the city, and is the latest iteration of the contract. Before you, if there's any questions, the information is before you.
Okay, is there any questions on this item that we would hope, some of our select officials would hope to not have to spend that money? Okay, Bill?
I think there's been a discussion in some of the other jurisdictions here, Alpharetta and Jones Creek, about looking at the possibility of conducting our own elections in the future, rather than having to go through Fulton County. I'd like to open that discussion during some work session down the road.
Okay, yeah, that's all. Oh, it's an option, I know, in fact, Mountain Park actually, does Cobb County do their elections, because about 25% of the cost, but that could be a special situation there, you know, as far as, not saying that would be pro-rata, you know, everything else, but...
Sounds like a deal.
Okay. There's no other questions, I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve an ordinance of the city council to authorize Fulton County to conduct our elections. Agenda Item Number 13-138.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Longoria for approval, and seconded by Councilmember Luss. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to new business.
Consideration of the approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and Crab Apple Community Association regarding responsibilities and obligations related to co-hosting of the Crab Apple Fest. Agenda Item Number 13-153. Mr. Paul Fricki.
Mr. Mayor, council, what you have before you is an agreement between the city of Milton and the Crab Apple Community Association, or CCA, and it's regarding the duties of each organization in regards to the Crab Apple Fest to be held October 5th. Typically, this would be on, under consent agenda, and the reason it's under new business instead of the consent agenda is because we're having a statement read into the record to dispel the appearance of a conflict of interest regarding Peyton Jameson, who is currently the president of the Crab Apple Community Association, and also a member of the Planning Commission. I'll have the city clerk read the statement into the record.
It should be disclosed that a member of the Planning Commission, Peyton Jameson, is currently serving as the president of CCA. This could present a potential conflict, however, this conflict is not an issue, as Mr. Jameson is not involved in negotiation or approval of the contract by the city. He does not receive any city funds through execution of this contract, and the code provides that the city may enter into contracts involving services with a business which is the only available source for such services. And CCA is the only entity that hosts this type of festival in downtown Crab Apple. To avoid the appearance of impropriety, Lisa Renko, vice president of the Crab Apple Community Association and president of the festival, has signed the contract.
Mr. Mayor, just to finally state, we don't feel this is... Mayor, just to finally state, we don't feel this is an absolute requirement, there are no problems with the contract, this is not altering the ability of the city to enter into this contract or affecting the validity of the contract, just as a matter of being perfectly candid and, in the open, decided to put this on the record.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other questions? Not, we'll open that up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve consideration of approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and Crab Apple Community Association regarding responsibilities and obligations related to co-hosting of the Crab Apple Fest. Agenda item number thirteen dash one five three.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. City clerk will please call the next item.
Our final item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals by appointing a board member for District Five. Agenda item number thirteen, one five four. Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Yeah, so I wanted to put forth Scott Ponder as my nominee for the Construction Board of Appeals and Adjustments. I wanted to just read a little bit about Scott. Not sure if any of you know Scott or not, but Scott's a neighbor of mine in Crooked Creek. Originally from Memphis, Tennessee, Scott Ponder relocated to Milton, Georgia in the fall of two thousand and ten after spending fifteen years in the New York metro area. Scott currently works with Ernst &amp; Young, serves in a management consulting position advising clients on strategy, program management, and technology. Scott has spent the majority of his career consulting with Fortune 500 clients with a focus on large-scale program management and the application of leading-edge technology to solve complicated business problems. Scott's currently a resident of Crooked Creek, where he lives with his wife and two sons. Furthermore, Scott attended the State University of New York at New Pounce. The Hawks, go Hawks.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion for approval for Mr. Ponder.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Ponder for agenda item number thirteen, one five four.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second by, I'd like Councilmember Larch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Scott, if you want to step up, I'll be glad to swear you in now before you.
Yeah, Scott's not here. He was supposed to be here.
He looks.
No, I was sitting there, I said, "That looks like Noel," but then it's like, you know, maybe it's, maybe Scott looks a whole lot.
Yeah, I should've said something.
And your hair's a little bit longer than you were last time you were here.
He was supposed to be here tonight, but he had to cancel it last minute.
We'll do it another time.
He could be his proxy.
Yeah.
Okay.
All of our new business items, we'll move on to reports. I, most of you know, and unfortunately, it seems like it's becoming an epidemic in not just Milton, but our North Fulton area, and I went and spoke with, sat down with the Senthiacs, whose son tragically lost or took his life a couple of weeks ago, and just told them that, and talked to them about, you know, they wanted to do something, and I said that I would certainly support it, and I'm sure council would too, to do something in, not only in memory of their son Matt, but whether there's plant a tree in a park or something like that, but whatever we can do as a municipality or not. But also, you know, to help them find a good worthwhile cause that maybe they can put some effort to and, and help some other folks out. So just, you know, again, both the Senthiacs and the other families have gone through this, it's, don't even know how to explain it, or really comprehend it, but certainly want to try to help them make some sense of it and turn something really bad into something that's a little good.
Now, there is a group that is working on putting together, and it's going to be a community-based event July second, I believe. If you go to the Facebook page, it's called, "It Takes a Village Milton Style." And they've actually got a speaker coming in to actually speak on, on what we can do as a community. And I think it's great that this is a, a community-based group coming together. This isn't something the city has done, but it's something the community has done, and are reaching out to try to help each other. The Candlelight Vigil Sunday night before last was, was a great event for bringing the community together. There were a lot of young people there, so that was very nice, but they're, they're working on it, and we got to do, try to do what we can to try to prevent things like this from happening in the future.
Okay. And then also looking forward to our GMA convention this coming up weekend, so usually is a very good beneficial weekend, and hopefully we'll all get some good training and also some quality time with other elected officials in other cities and learn and benefit for our city. Anything else, council, you want to say?
Matt? Yeah, I graduated from leadership in Fulton.
Congratulations.
Officially, so we, thanks, Mayor, help and support. You're willing to just put me through that, and I know Karen was a teacher as well, and great job on that.
We've got three of us now that are graduates.
Yeah, so just so you guys know what that was, is through the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce, they have a class to help from, it was lasted about six months, for a leadership program. And ultimately, you get to find out all the crazy things about yourself and everybody else, and how to deal with everybody, and then they force you to pick a project to help a 501(c)(3) within the North Fulton area. So, so you know what my group did, we got together, we actually joined with Dave McCleary and the Roswell Rotary Club to fight human sex trafficking, which goes on in this area, and we created a public service announcement, had a fundraiser for it and everything, and it will be completed this week. And my goal is on Wednesday to go down and pick it up from the construction company, or the production company, and, and find a way to get it on the air. So, just, it was a great project, great experience. We had hundreds of people that were involved in helping us with that, and, you know, and great program, so I commend anybody else who wants to go through that in the future.
I do.
And to, second thing, for all of you dads, Happy Father's Day. Hope it was a good day.
Every day's a good day. Some are better than others.
Right.
Nothing else, we'll go to staff for, ask for reports.
We actually have several staff reports. I have one, Carter has a few, and I believe Chief has one as well, so I will actually let the chief go first.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What I wanted to do is give you an update on where we are in the North Fulton ambulance process that we've been going through. On May twenty-first, EMS Region Three Council met regarding the delivery of EMS services to the North Fulton area, including the City of Milton. That meeting resulted in a thirty-day extension by the Region Three Council, and whether to open the zone to competitive bidding process, so we would have a, possibly a new ambulance service in the city. But they delayed that decision for thirty days, and during that thirty-day time period, Rural Metro committed to adding two additional ambulances to the city, or to the system, one in Milton and one in Johns Creek, since those two cities have the worst response times. The next Region Three meeting, which this will come, hopefully, to a decision at that point, would be June twenty-fifth, and during that time, they'll make a decision and a recommendation to the Chair of the Region Three Council whether to open this up to a competitive bid or not. On June thirteenth, the, all the North Fulton cities got together, and Johns Creek, I'm sorry, Sandy Springs took the lead in that meeting, and what they did is they put a PowerPoint presentation together and outlined some recommendations they would like to see brought forth, Region Three Council. Those recommendations included continuing the service with Rural Metro for another year until June of two thousand and fourteen, allow Sandy Springs to have their own EMS license, and then also the North Fulton cities to have their own. So basically what's happening is they're asking to basically fragment the system a little bit, and then go out to competitive bid back, so we have a new provider, or if Rural Metro continues to be the provider back in June of two thousand and fourteen. Sandy Springs has asked all the cities to participate in this and to sign an agreement and, so that we could take this forth to Region Three. We are still evaluating that and looking at that, and at this point, we have no recommendation one way or another whether to take this any further than where it is right now. We're just looking to see how this, how this is, fits in the best interest of the City of Milton. So that, that's where we are today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Yeah, and go ahead, Bill.
Have they placed the additional ambulance up here on that?
They did. May twenty-fourth, they added that unit to the city, and what we did is we moved that unit up to Station Forty-three, which has the worst response times anywhere in the city. And we've seen an improvement, obviously, by having that unit here, but what happens as the units deplete down in the south end, we continue to see that unit moving south. So when the levels get down, which they call Level Two and Level Three, which means there's only two or three ambulances left in the whole North Fulton area, that unit starts to move down towards the Roswell-Alpharetta area. But we have seen an improvement in the response times. So that, that's a plus, and so it does show that there is a need here.
What are the response times now? What are we dealing with?
Well, the average, just from that short period of time that we've been able to look at the data, is just about, it was nine minutes and fifty-five seconds was the average for the area. We've been averaging above twelve, anywhere from twelve to fourteen minutes in response time. So again, an improvement in the system.
Matt?
Yeah, two questions, and I'm going to make sure I understand this, have my head around it. If they don't show up on time, I guess we have the ability to put someone on our trucks to get them through an ambulance, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, we don't have a piece of apparatus that has the capability of transporting a patient at this point.
Right, so we just wouldn't do it?
We, we, we could not do it, we'd have to sit and wait.
You just stay with them and do whatever you can until the ambulance gets there?
That's right.
And, and payment features for Rural Metro, do we pay them on a per visit, per need, on a contractual basis? How's that work?
It's basically a user fee. Whoever is transported pays that fee. Now, they're anticipating, with the new agreement that, that was brought before council a few months back, they're anticipating a forty percent increase in transport fees to offset the subsidy that we were paying them. We were paying them a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. So that, that subsidy goes away July first. We've just made our last payment into that program. So they said with that, the reduction in revenue that they have coming in, they're going to go ahead and raise the rates up to forty percent.
Is that consistent among all of North Fulton, or just Milton?
That's all North Fulton.
The same fee for everybody in all of North Fulton?
With the exception of Sandy Springs, they have in their, in their contract, a rate increase parameters where the North Fulton cities do not.
And if it does go to a competitive bid, are the other players reliable?
Yes, as far as I can tell, yes. What, I think one of the advantages of, and at least from my perspective, is we have an opportunity to write part of that effort on the RFP for that process, so it gives us some more say into what happens.
Okay. Anybody else? And I, you know, thanks Chief Edgar, because this is, as most of you probably know, is a tough issue, and Milton probably would be the biggest, not only benefitter, but has the hardest issue to fill this need, being kind of on the, on the.
Outside and more rural and area to cover.
So Johns Creek's probably a little bit like that, but, but not as much, but so it kind of puts our folks, keep in mind, in a tough spot from going with the group of everybody else, because we obviously want to look out for the best interest of Milton and our citizens. So we appreciate you guys sticking in there on that.
Thank you. Just had a couple of quick updates on some projects for you. Our intersection project at State Route one forty and New Providence Road, we had a pre-con meeting last week on that, and they anticipate getting mobilized and up to speed by the end of the month, this end of June. The three seventy-two project is, while not related, typically tracking about a month behind on that. We haven't gotten notification on a pre-construction meeting on that, although the contract has been awarded, so we would expect to see something probably in the next couple of weeks to get that one up and moving to. The other project that we had a pre-con, or not a pre-construction meeting with, but a meeting with GDOT this afternoon on, is the widening of Highway Nine. And that project is kicking off in a number of different phases between here and the city of coming, five different projects going on concurrently. And for us, they are beginning the design process down here between Windward Parkway and the county line. And so our discussion with them was, through our various LCIs and studies that we've done down here in overlay districts, that the design elements and components that we've generated from those studies would be essentially what we were looking for from the city's standpoint to be incorporated in their overall design. And while they're more than happy to do that, one of the things that we'll be looking at through this process is some of those will come with some cost to the city, and we'll just have to determine whether or not those are elements that we want to continue with in the design process. For instance, median plantings, pedestrian lighting, street lighting, those types of things that are elements of our various studies. We'll have to make a decision on priorities about whether or not we want to consider those as we move forward. Probably in August or September, they'll bring forward to a council work session, a draft of the concept layout for that, at which point we'll have an opportunity to provide some input. Also, through the process, there'll be a number of different public meetings that will have an opportunity to provide input, but I would also ask that if there are concerns or issues that you may have that may not be in the LCIs or some of the studies that we presented to GDOT, that if you would get word through Chris to me or through Stacy to me, any elements or comments or concerns that you have along that corridor, and we'll pass those on to GDOT and try and get some of those things involved early in the process. So again, probably in the August or September timeframe, they're, they're expecting to have the concept plan in a draft form that they can come present and begin to start getting some comments and some input from the city. At this point, they are responding very favorably to input from the city, and we'll just have to see as we work our way through the process, but I think they're, they are really trying to make an effort to include some of the elements that we think are important in the city and try and make that a corridor that we all probably envision it to be. So again, if, anytime you have comments or questions, please feel free to try and get those over to me, and I'll feed them on to GDOT as I get them. And that's it, thank you.
What, on the, just, just the first one to start, the one forty and New Providence project, you said, starting about a month, what's the anticipated schedule for completion for that?
With the weather that we have, it's probably longer than we anticipated, but it's currently scheduled for one-year construction.
And just in general on that, I think you guys may get some questions, that one year, obviously, they just have to deal with temporary traffic control and.
That's right.
All that, so.
That's right. And we'll try and keep our website updated, our normalmiltonintersectionprojects dot com website. You can always direct anybody to that website, we'll keep as much information up to date as we can on that, and as well, you can direct them to myself or Sarah if anybody has any comments, questions on that particular project.
Okay. Bill and then Karen.
I have had some people ask me if you were going to be closing down Birmingham Highway for that intersection improvement, so I told them, "No, that you're not going to be closing it down for," I didn't think you'd be closing it down for a year. Are you just going to be rerouting traffic during that time, or?
That's right, it'd be an interesting process. The way it'll get staged is we'll build as much as we can that's located outside of the existing roadway, and then transition it over, and there may be temporary lane closures and some traffic headaches.
It will be fun.
But it will remain open during the construction process. Interesting part is when you get down to the very end and transition from the through traffic into the roundabout traffic, so, but.
Bill?
With the Highway Nine design with GDOT, is the state going to hold community information meetings?
Yes, sir, they will. And, and they'll, they'll be looking to us for a little bit of guidance on that. There are a number of community information meetings that are required just as part of the process, but the feedback I was getting today was that if we, if we thought we needed some additional community input, they would be willing to do that. Our, our guidance to them today was basically, we've done this for a couple of years, and we've had a lot of community input on developing these plans, and if they would use. we've had a lot of community input on developing these plans, and if they would use those as their guidance, that their normal process would probably be okay, but I think if we find that not to be the case, they would certainly take that under advisement and try and work with us as best they can.
You didn't mention Francis Cogburn, hopefully.
We just got bids in on that, so we'll be evaluating those bids and hopefully be awarding that contract or bringing it forward for council consideration, probably July fifteenth meeting.
Now, that one, we will be doing ourselves, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll be able to do that with a little more control and a little more speed than
That's correct.
The state sometimes doesn't.
That's correct, that'll be a locally controlled project, so the other two projects, obviously, we've turned over to GDOT and we're done with, and they'll be completing the construction on the one forty and the three seventy-two projects, hopeful Francis Cogburn will be all us.
The completion around when?
Pardon me?
What, complete, it's like the completion around when?
That's going to be a nine-month to twelve-month process.
Okay.
Obviously, weather dependent.
Anything else?
Yes, I actually have one item, you saw in an email today that was sent out to you, is a seventy-two hour chance for objecting to the consideration of approval of the contract agreement with the City of Milton and Triscates Incorporated for the vehicle gate and previous driveway at Friendship Community Park. While Jim was on vacation last week, Tom came to me and was asking about the purchase order that was cut for this, and he wanted to know if he could go ahead with the project, and I failed to ask the question of if there was a contract approved yet, and because I did not ask that question, I went ahead and approved for him to move forward with the project, so I apologize, it is started, we, it's not completed yet, so we have halted the process pending your approval, was asking you tonight if there are any objections that we have to the project itself, or the contract, if not, we can.
What kind of gate is it going to be?
It's a sliding gate, it is something that will, it's larger, you want to say something? Oh, go ahead.
You know, you're doing fine.
It's a sliding gate, it allows a larger vehicle to come in there, I don't know if you got a chance to look at the email today, but there was a picture of a whole lot of people pushing one of those large rock walls through the smaller gate for the Earth Day Festival, and we have some large equipment needing to be delivered for the, was it Christmas and Friendship Park event that we have coming up in that, in that park, and this is going to be where we have the big snow mountain, and so there's going to be some larger equipment that needs to come in there, so it's a project, it's timely, we don't have to push it, you know, right now, but it is, you know, in the next few weeks, we do need to go ahead and move forward with this project.
I saw the pictures, yes, move forward.
The council in agreement with, all right, do you have any objections? No. And this will be brought forth at a later date, I guess at the.
July one.
July first council meeting, for official approval, but I do appreciate you allowing me to move forward with this. And also, one other thing, I will be down in Savannah while you are at the GMA conference, I will not be attending the conference, I'm down there attending my high school reunion.
Gosh, five years goes quick.
Thank you, Joe. So if you need anything, please do feel free to give me a call, because I will be in the area until Wednesday.
I'm trying not to bug you. Okay. Now, I'll, to conclude the meeting and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.